Okay, let's go ahead and get started with tonight's city council meeting of December 16th. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Christina.
Yes, Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parsons?
Present.
Mayor Lambert?
Here. Have one change to the agenda, that's the removal of item B as in boy three. We did not receive any pay up on that park condition. If I can have a motion to approve the agenda as revised?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as revised. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need to have a motion to approve the minutes of November 27th, December 2nd, and December 6th.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need to have a motion to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims submitted with the agenda totaling 809,421. Any questions from the council? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, it's community input time. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so at this time. Hearing none, we'll go into our regular meeting. Uh, first item in business is the second reading of ordinance 599, the rezoning of 800s North Split Rock from the Natural Resources Conservation District to institutional. Anything additional on that, Brian, or same? If we can have a motion to approve that ordinance 599?
So moved.
Second reading of it?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the second reading of ordinance 599. Any questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have the second reading of ordinance 598. The ambulance services of the Brandon City Code. Can I have a motion to approve the second reading of that?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the second reading of ordinance 598, the ambulance services code. Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, sir. If we leave it, if I'm understanding things correctly, Brian, or VC, you can correct me, but if we leave it the way it is, I think it opens us up to some risk that we don't want to take because our, what do I want to say, the qualifications for the EMT and...
Section six, section six dash seven, item eight, requiring one paramedic and one EMT is a change from our current ordinance, which requires two EMTs. The county has changed their requirement to one EMT and a driver. Um, Robert Dyke, through the fire chief, did email me back Friday saying that the driver has to have some training, the EVOC training that we talked about, the emergency vehicle. They have to have that, so that's a requirement for the county.
So it'd open us up to some liability if we leave it the way it is, which I don't want to open the city up to that. So my proposal would be, leave it the same as the county. There's some qualifications there that you have to have to be a driver. It isn't just like I could hop in the vehicle and drive it. There's some qualifications that you have to have. And, um, the other thing I'd remind everybody of is when Brett and I and Ryan started on this, our goal always was to try to follow the county as close as we could because again, our long-term goal was if the county was ever going to oversee all the ambulance service for the county, we wanted to be in line with the county ordinance and not be different from it. So that's what, that's what started us on this whole ordinance in the beginning was to try to follow that as much as we could and get something in order that we were, that we would have in place for when we considered giving money to an ambulance service. So that would be my rationale for Ryan to change it tonight.
Okay, so right now we've got it, paramedic and EMT. That's the way we have it.
That's in the proposed ordinance, correct?
Well, I think Chuck, the reason the county is going that route is because in those rural areas, they're having trouble staffing those vehicles. And I, I understand that we can have that issue if, you know, we've got three things going on at a time, but we've got a business here. We're helping them...
We're helping an ambulance service by a donation that we're giving.
Right. So I guess, I don't feel compelled to go along with the county because I think that's too slack myself.
But I don't want to open the city up to any undue liability that we would do by leaving it the same.
Why would that, why would that create undue liability?
We have an ordinance as written that we want to have one paramedic and one EMT. My understanding is there's discussion that there might be possibilities in which, because maybe two ambulances already went out, that the third ambulance would not have a paramec and an EMT. Our standard requires a paramedic and an EMT, and if it only has an EMT, it's not meeting our standard. We have the ability to do a quality review control and have the medical director decide whether or not the ambulance service is meeting sufficient thresholds. So in terms of opening ourselves up to liability, I think the, what Chuck is talking about is, do we run the risk of on the third call where there's only an EMT and not a paramedic? The person who is calling for services has a concern that they only had an EMT and maybe didn't receive adequate care. Would they be able to bring a claim against the city? I think that's the liability that Chuck is talking about. If we have an ordinance and we're not following it, what is our liability? That's a risk of liability. I don't know that, by not following the ordinances, you do have some discretion within what we have within here. So I don't foresee a claim being a real viable claim, but it's a risk. You always have to understand what the risk might be if they don't go out with the one and one. Brian told me of this issue on Friday, and I did draft, redraft this to indicate that the minimum should be a paramedic and an emergency medical technician unless, and I didn't, I don't have the language with me, I sent it to him today, but essentially it says unless there's an emergency, um, where we don't have, um, the way I revised it, in case you wanted to consider it, that the first two ambulances that are dispatched have to have an EMT and paramedic, um, and thereafter at least two EMTs, that's a possibility, or one EMT, so you could have that. But the first two have to have a paramedic and an EMT. Or you could say minimum of one paramedic and one EMT and apply unless the license C demonstrates extraordinary circumstances such as numerous more than one, uh, more than one or two ambulances that are out being dispatched at the same time. So I think you have to decide what it is you want. Do you want a paramedic and EMT? Do you want two EMTs? Do you want one EMT? Um, and we can draft it to take care of the concern where maybe because of extraordinary circumstances such as two already out and the third one, they don't have what you want.
And I didn't want to go down that route, Barb, because I wanted to again mirror the county and let the ambulance service, whoever it may be, let them decide what standard they want to maintain.
So Lisa, is that worded so that we're talking emergency calls for ambulance use only? Because there's also transport for hire service being conducted, and that's a concern I would have for our residents, is are we being shorted, paramedics, EMTs, or ambulances in general because some are out for hire? I mean, are we wording it so that we're protecting this language to just deal with our emergency ambulance service only?
The way I worded it in a possible revised draft is that, um, on the first two ambulances that are dispatched, for whatever reason, so if they're being dispatched, I mean, we could say dispatched by metro communications, and then I think that would take care of the issue of if it's for hire. Um, so we could phrase it that way, dispatched by metro communications, the first two shall have this, and thereafter then this. Um, so we could address that issue if you want. I would just have to add another word into the proposed language that I drafted for Brian this morning.
I did, I did meet and talk with Jay Major from MedStar. He's, he apologizes for not being here tonight. He has a prior commitment. Um, his concern obviously is if he doesn't have a paramedic ready to roll because he's got other rigs out. He would be hard pressed to not comply with the ordinance, uh, so then he would call for mutual aid, which then dispatch would determine who that would be. It could be paramedics plus from Sioux Falls, or it could be the Garrettson ambulance from Garrettson, depending on who's available.
Isn't this what we've had in the past? Are we changing it? Hasn't he been living with this up until now, or am I incorrect with that?
All we require now is two EMTs. He's been doing a paramedic and an EMT the vast majority of the time, talking with Jay. He's had probably two runs in the last two years where he didn't have the param, he had two EMTs instead of a paramedic and an EMT.
I guess personally, I'm okay with the EMT. My concern is when we get to the point where it's one of an EMT and a driver. I am not really particularly comfortable with that. That's where I'm kind of drawing the line.
I would propose we table this to the next meeting. I mean, I don't think any of us even read these alternatives yet. Unless, maybe I haven't.
Consensus of the board to table? Do we have to have a motion to table it?
Yeah, you've got a motion and a second on the table now. You should have a motion to table or a second to table till the next meeting.
You made the motion?
So you want me to amend my motion?
Anybody, anybody?
To table it?
Anybody can table.
Okay, I'll amend it to table.
I'll second.
Go ahead. Till the next meeting.
A motion is second to table the second, approval of the second reading of ordinance 598. Any further discussion?
Yes, so just in, for my little pea brain here, right now, we require two EMTs.
Correct.
All right. And the new proposal is saying one of each, one EMT and one...
Paramedic.
Which is an increase.
Correct.
Okay. And the county is actually going down, and they're going to one EMT and a driver. So at the, at the, right now where we're at, we're kind of in the middle, right? Okay.
Is a paramedic automatically an EMT? So if you have your paramedic license, do you have your EMT? Because that's part of the paramedic license since it's a higher standard?
Yes, paramedic is just higher standard. It's...
Right, so if you said two EMTs, it could be a paramedic because the paramedic would always have an EMT license?
Correct.
Okay.
In other words, if Jay...
Wanted to staff with a paramedic and EMT, he really is staffing with two EMTs, one just happens to be higher.
Further comment from the council? Does everybody remember the motion?
Motion table till the next meeting, and a second.
I have that much. Does everybody remember the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is item, uh, A2, to approve a contract with Kerry Thill as the events coordinator for 2020 for the golf course, a salary of $48,859 plus 10% of the net commission. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the contract with Kerry Thill as the events coordinator. Discussion for 2020. If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have a wage adjustment, uh, in the Parks and Recs Department for Seth Olson to put his salary at $19.50 an hour. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion is second to adjust the wage of Seth Olson to $19.50 an hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also have a wage adjustment for the police officer Alex Palmer to $30.33 an hour. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve ma, a wage adjustment to Alex Palmer to $30.33 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three more garbage hauler license approvals for AOK Sanitary, Novac Sanitation, and RBS Sanitation.
Move to approve.
Motion is second to approve the three additional garbage hauler licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one additional sewer cleaning license to approve from Hander Plumbing. Motion?
So moved.
Motion to approve Hander Plumbing for a sewer cleaning license in the city of Brandon. All those in favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 3419 is a transfer of contingency funds of $20,000 for traffic lights and $13,500 for transit equipment.
Yes, the traffic lights are mostly for the rapid flashing beacons and moving some school zone lights, um, this year, and the transit equipment is for a new bus.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve resolution 34-19 approving transferring of contingency funds as noted. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have resolution 35-19 closing the special assessment fund of number 338 and transferring the remaining amount of funds of $12,365 into the general fund.
Transferring from the general fund to the special assessment fund, um, to close that out, um, and then that special assessment is complete. The bonds have been met on that.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Checkmate.
Motion is second to approve resolution 35-19 closing the special assessment fund number 338. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a house moving application from Tammy and Joey Pearson, moving a house from 1620 East Redwood. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the house moving application from Tammy and Joey Pearson from 620 East Redwood. Any questions?
Um, so police department is okay with all of this and...
Yeah.
They're required by state to have best part structure here.
Any other questions?
We haven't, we haven't charged between the past, so staff's recommendation is to not charge if you just had it.
There was a little discussion on Thursday in the briefing about there potentially being a risky area with, um, was, is it where the basement?
That will be fenced off.
We'll fence that with chain link. Chain link, that's all.
Does staff feel comfortable with that?
That's fine, that's, that's their risk.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have resolution 37-19 clearing an intent to reimburse expenditures with the proceeds from the bond sale for well number eight project not to exceed $1 million. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve resolution 37-19. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, I have a wage adjustment for Dustin Wagner moving to $19.50 an hour. Can I have a motion? Motion is second to adjust the wage for Dustin Wagner to $19.50 an hour. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have Holly Boulevard change order number one, which is an additional amount of $9,442 to remove and replace a fire hydrant with first rate excavate. Can I have a motion to approve that change order?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve change order number one as listed. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Holly Boulevard pay application number five in the amount of $23,376.84 to first rate excavate. Have a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve pay app number five to first rate excavate, the amount of $23,376.84. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F1 deals with the declaration of, uh, emergency to perform repairs on well number six. And what that entails is just, uh, this council will, I assume, would approve this declaration of emergency so we can avoid the formal bid laws required of us when it's over $50,000 repair. So I would entertain, entertain a motion to approve that emergency declaration. Motion is second to approve the emergency declaration to repair well number six. Any questions?
So this is just because we have an issue with the casing and we need to get it fixed?
Correct. There's a hole in the casing. You can see that in the, in the picture on page 62. That hole has allowed rocks and sand to get into the, the casing pipe, which then the pump sucked up and damaged the pump. So there's a temporary pump installed by Tine Well right at the moment. That's certainly providing adequate, um, water for the city. It's, it's, we're declaring an emergency so that we can bypass the bid regulations and, and not delay this project. This is the primary well for the city. Tine did submit a, a cost estimate of $45,953, which is below the $50,000 bid regulation, but they'd already performed work putting in the temporary pump. Public Works did solicit another well driller who has worked on the well before, and they've declined to, just submit a quote. Um, just a little history on this. If you remember, we had planned on rehabbing well six, uh, but we can't, we couldn't do that until well number eight was drilled, as it's the primary water source. We'd actually started, uh, we took bids on well number eight two years ago, and at the request of concerned citizens, the council rejected those bids to develop well eight at that time. Uh, if we had followed through with our original plan to drill number eight in 2018, well number eight would have been up and running. We would have rehabbed well number six already, and this would not have happened.
And based on the information that I know, we are not in a catastrophe where we're going to be without water?
No.
Uh, I think people need to be aware that we, we have it under control.
The reason for emergency declaration is timeliness only.
Correct.
We just don't want to sit around and go through a, about a eight-week formal bid process.
Correct.
Period.
If well number six goes out or during the repairs, it will not be in service, well number three and number one will have adequate water to supply our needs.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Main Avenue Interceptor Pay App number six in the amount of $90,566.54 to H&amp;W Contracting. Can I have a motion to approve pay app number six?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number six to H&amp;W Contracting in the amount of $90,566.54. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pay app number two for the Aspen Boulevard Force Main Repair Project, the amount of $203,849.57 to Metro Construction. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number two to Metro Construction in the amount of $203,849.57. Questions?
So Tammy, how, how are we, are we about done with that?
Um, utilities are running and working. Um, we will come back and do a little bit more erosion control type work in the spring. So, pretty well done.
And it went pretty well?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Change order number three on the Redwood Storm Sewer Project, uh, deducting the amount of $15,829.44. This is with first rate excavate also. Can I have a motion to approve that deduct change order?
Second.
Motion is second to approve change order number three with, uh, first rate excavate, the amount of $15,829.44 deduct. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the pay app for Redwood Storm Sewer Project number five and final pay app, $33,711.19 to first rate excavate. Have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number five, the final pay app to first rate excavate for this project in the amount of $33,711.19. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number F6 is resolution 36-19 setting the 2020 SDC charges as outlined in the board packet. Any change or discussion, Brian?
Nope, this, this is just following the plan that we've been working on for a few years that decreases the amount of the city's share of the SDC charge to the developer and or the builder. Uh, that goes from the developer cost from $838 to $957 per lot, and then the same thing for a three-quarter inch meter or smaller. Then the meter, the SDC charge for the other meters are based upon availability and, and size of water or amount of water that can go through the meter. So the plan is that by 2022, the city would, would be out of the SDC payment business.
Can I have a motion to approve the 2020 SDC charges as laid out in the board packet?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve resolution 36-19 setting the 2020 SDC charges as presented in the council packet tonight. Any additional questions?
Well, we've had numerous meetings with the developers over the years, so they're, they're well aware of this schedule.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll get it out to them as well. We'll get out that spreadsheet to them, too.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have change order number two on the Water Main Looping Project, deducting the amount of $16,517.22 to blacktop paving. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the change order number two on the Water Main Looping Project with blacktop paving, a deduct in the amount of $16,517.22. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Following that, we have the final pay app for that project, pay app number six with blacktop paving, the amount of $41,892.42. Have a motion to approve that? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number six to blacktop paving for $41,892.42. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Christina had the revenue and expense reports in your packet tonight. Any questions from the council? Revenue wise, it looked like all the major tax funds were on track to be at or above budget on the revenue side. Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, uh, can I have a motion for adjournment at, uh, 6:28?
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn at 6:28 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Happy holidays, everyone. Happy holidays, everyone. Christmas coming, I mean, something like that.